Mary, hold on. Can't miss Mary.
It's okay. I've spoken. You like gaffer's tape.
We had to tape earlier. Heard that it's gonna work for today.
No sudden movement.
Don't get excited. Okay. Let's see, I think we're hearing. Hello, attendees. See, hey Ray Otten, if you can hear us, let me know, text me that you can hear us. I use that as the.
Nathan's the panda, maybe that's.
Is this hand up?
It was very exciting.
Nathan, put your hand up if you can hear us. Okay, I think that would be yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see here. And Bray says he can. Hi, Ray. Okay. Sorry for the delay, technical difficulties and we're gonna have some traffic issues, but uh, we're gonna get this sorted nonetheless. Uh, this is a special meeting and uh, let us rise for the pledge allegiance very calmly. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the great power for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whose name. And again, this special meeting, our very sidewalks, a couple of things just wanted to say off the top, the public hearings that were scheduled for Monday are gonna be canceled. I basically pumped it because we had discovered a couple of other things that we'd like to amend in the. Codes that we were attempting to amend. For instance, we realized one seventy four dash twenty probably should be amended that refers to curving. But also refers to replacements of sidewalk two. It's it's a weird. I don't know how that ever got written that way, because one thing says you can use a schedule, the other one doesn't actually too, already in law. So we'll just fix both of those in that situation. Uh, for the upfront months here, let's get that ready for the spring. With respect to parks, the discussion was to require the S L A. Application to be submitted to the clerk, so at least we can see what the confinement plan would be.
That's a good idea.
So we'll. What's up?
Thanks for doing that.
No problem, but it just, you know, after reading back from Mary's stuff that she'd sent us. And then also relooking at that sidewalk code, it's like. Better be safely starting that one or both of those. So we'll get those rescheduled. So Marilyn, that's why it's not on the website yet. Okay, uh, what's to start on this sidewalk discussion?
I guess I could start.
Sure.
Um, so. I think. We've, we've. Talked about this for quite some time. We've gone back and forth. I think it's made been made clear that. The biggest issue, you know, with the idea of. The village assuming responsibility for repairs and maintenance was liability. Um, and I can, I can understand that. I think it's fine if we want to move forward with maintaining liability. I think it's fine doing a fifty cent percent reimbursement. But there are some things in the law. Currently that are a bit. Archaic and contradictory. Um, that I think we should probably change as well.
So Bernard was asking me earlier, what version should we be using right now considering multiple versions? My thought is we go back to what we had in Mayish of last year, I think it was.
There's a five fifteen version that was right after the special meeting.
And use that as the foundation to put, uh, to relook at with the reimbursement. Well. We'll be front loading right now what reimbursement should look like based on that old code and then also. Relooking at uh, dash twenty there that had kind of inconsistency about curving. Uh, so we already have that baked in. Uh, that then is a question of reimbursements and making sure that our enforcement mechanism is. I think sufficient to what we want it to be. So I think it's a question of re reviewing that version almost in the step by step like we did with the parks code.
Yeah, there's only one thing I think we left out of that particular version, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of things that I think are not in there that we might want to talk about. One is. What I would suggest is that the removal of sidewalks is not allowed except in order to install a new sidewalk. Do we have any problems with that? Because right now you're allowed to remove a sidewalk and people do because they don't want liability, they don't want to plow. But um, but I think it's in the village's interest to not. Enable that.
Yeah, I'm open minded to that. I just, I, I want, I want to go back and look at that again to see why it might exist in the first place. There's gotta be. You wouldn't think that they would have done that without a real.
I don't think it says anything. Yeah, I don't think it says you're allowed to remove your sidewalk, but there's nothing saying you can't. And in the, in the fee schedule, it says. That D P W will remove sidewalk debris for free, which implies that maybe we're encouraging.
The way sorry, sorry. Require D P W like approval. Like if there's a real reason that that needs to be removed, maybe. We should be open to it just in case, but I don't know.
If it needs to be removed, then replace it.
Right, that's, that's really all it is. The phrase is. You can remove it if you want, but you gotta put it back.
Yeah. I mean.
I, I see where she's saying, oh yeah, maybe make it a D P W process essentially to remove, you have to go to the D P W will sell you. Uh, replace your divots, thank you. Basically put it back.
Well. I think that doesn't like obviate the, the need or, or, or importance of putting it in the law. Like you're not allowed to remove your sidewalks. Like it doesn't serve a public interest to allow people to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think if you explicitly spell it out. If somebody wants to remove their sidewalk, they're gonna and you say, well, you can't do that. Well, so what?
Well, maybe, maybe what we have to do is explain technically when you replace it, it's a temporary removal of the sidewalk, right?
Okay, well, that's what you say. You say removal of sidewalks is not allowed, comma, except in order to install a new sidewalk.
And then you put a number of days for them to comply into that place where I'm going with it to say essentially, okay, we get that you may need to remove.
Yeah, maybe, maybe should be catch permanent removal.
Well, the number of days is not a bad idea. You don't want to just sit in there for two years or whatever. Um, is there a number of like, what? Thirty days? Well, if you remove it, you must have a plan. You have to have a plan. So thirty days of private plenty of time. To complete the job, right?
A dumb question because I don't know. Um, but. Would the same people installing the side of the. Well, I guess we're saying D P Ws, who's removing it? And is it the same company that's installing the sidewalk?
Well, that's, that's another sticking point for me. I don't know why we're adding an additional task to D P W.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't think, if it's the, if it's the property owner's responsibility, they should do the whole thing. And I, and typically. In my experience.
Do we get anything for the, uh, do we get anything for processing the used goods of the sidewalk basically? I don't know.
Unless you know somebody who's paying for clean fill.
That's about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I guess my question is if it's two different entities, could it? I just don't want somebody actually get accidentally get in a situation where they couldn't, some reason the scheduling of the installation.
I think typically it's the same company, they, they look at the whole job, see what's needed. And if sidewalk needs to be removed, they'll remove it and they'll replace.
That's what happened with your sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's three steps there. There's removal from where it's existing location. Typically they put it out on the curb. Um, in this case would be, well, if they're gonna remove it. They need to either provide. Some sort of storage container like a dumpster or something or a trailer. But they're removing it. And whether they take it to a dump or to somebody who wants clean fill. Then it doesn't. Basically takes it out of D P W's hair.
Yeah, I think we just have the homeowners. Assuming we're not taking no responsibility, um. The homeowner just do our response for everything and um. I don't even know why, and we just reimburse at a rate that makes it possible. Um, I don't even know why D P W would be involved at all in terms of taking in stuff away. Just let the contractor deal with the whole thing. And um, I did, I, 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 when I spoke with Wade some time ago. He said, there's a, there is a, a village law or village, village law says you can only reimburse up to fifty percent, but he says there's. Other laws that supersede village law, which give us basically. Unlimited flexibility to reimburse at whatever level we want to, up to a hundred percent.
Did he cite where, what he's talking about or?
It is a phone call. Um, so yes, there's some other law and so that could be pursued, but. He said it a number of times. I think he said it. I don't know if he said it with you, but he's, he's, um. I, I, it's been asked a couple of times, different ways and um. So we shouldn't. Feel we're obligated to stay at fifty percent in his opinion, but. Um. The other piece. That just recently. Um, I discussed with him is that. We could actually, if we wanted to, because if we don't feel like we have sufficient funds, for example. You can do apparently a benefit assessment and um, have, have property owners remain responsible. So they, the liability stays then and you do a benefit assessment. The, the rationale in my mind for doing a benefit assessment would be. To enable to reimburse property owners at a higher rate. Like higher than fifty percent. And um. And therefore, uh, more people would do it and um, and enforcement is easier, you know, because we're not costing them as much money. Um, so we could reimburse, you know, if we did a benefit assessment, maybe we could do eighty percent, you know, or something.
Yeah, I mean, my thoughts on this is. I think fifty percent is a good starting point and we could probably. Obviously, if we incorporate it into a fee schedule. You know, and it's outside of the law, the percentage reimbursement. We can change it as needed. But I mean, as a starting point, fifty percent sounds great. Now, I do think a benefit assessment fee would be. A way to generate revenue and create a pot of money. To. Reimburse that other fifty percent. And also if there were situations where individuals couldn't come up with their half. It would also create a fund. That would be specifically dedicated towards sidewalk. Um, that. You know, we, we had to loan it out. Cause my big issue with the loan. Is. The money we have is already their money. Um, that's some patsy scheme where you're like, I'm gonna take your money. And then I'm gonna give it back to you and I'm gonna charge you interest. I know it's legal. But it's definitely not moral or ethical. So.
Unfortunately, the law doesn't allow us to do what would probably be the most preferred thing we would do, which is. A full reimbursement up to a certain level. It just doesn't allow it. And so how do we? Handle it in that scenario?
I don't know. Be alone, it just be a zero percent.
Well, you can't do that legally. You have to charge interest on a loan. If period, that's unfortunate legality.
Plus I mean.
Federal government publishes minimum interest rates you have to charge each quarter or each month, I think it is. Uh, on loans, otherwise it doesn't qualify as a loan. Uh, and ultimately.
Well, then what else can you call it?
I don't know, but maybe there's forgivability of loans too, that might be.
Isn't that a gift?
I don't know, uh, that, but you know, loan forgiveness is done by the federal government during the P P P and stuff like that or during uh, when the swamp is once back on.
That was an emergency though.
Uh, forgiveness itself wasn't necessarily, you still had to qualify or do something to become forgiven. So you have to set up, I think, a universal standard to do it. So one thing just to tell you, we have received some notes from Julie. For a line over at M J Bourbon, who does a prior house grants. And uh, this went out, you had gotten it too, I know, and I got it directly, but she applied to. Uh, for Schumer, Gillibrand, uh, money.
Oh yeah, I got that email.
Yeah, and so I asked her if we could possibly utilize a grant request there for. Uh, essentially reimbursements and loan pool setup. And she says normally, yes, she's gonna look into the specific wording, the issue years version of it, see it's precluded for some reason, but that. Right now looks like something we might be able to actually file for. Also, don't forget that once we get those two dump trucks in from USDA, uh, for USDA purposes. We'll finally close on that loan of over a million dollars at two and a half percent interest rate.
So we'll get that back, you're saying.
Well, what I'm saying is if we're going to put out loans for sidewalks of something like four or five percent. Uh, we have an administrative cost gap that we're able to justify because we're reloaning money that we're getting at two and a half percent at fourish percent. So less administrative money as well to go with it because it's, it's not. Free to go set up something like this. Obviously, there's some industry, and once you get it rolling, it's a little bit easier, obviously. I put up the taxes and all that stuff.
Well, that's what we said about the other burden too. But um, the, uh, the, the. The challenge with doing it by a grant is that typically grants want to know how much is going to be done. You have to.
Well, we have the eighty eight plan as I cited today. So now we have an actual amount of sidewalk each year. That's the goal. We can see.
Alright, so you'll, you'll do the enforcement in. Which is a, you'll have a quota of enforceable properties, it sounds like.
Right, and so basically you go out, you say, what was point seven ish miles per year, linear times five, so basically three point five. Uh, square miles at that point. Uh, and then figure out what the average sidewalk expense would be to an individual out there, probably the twelve, twelve fifty range right now looks like.
No, more than that. Mine was sixteen.
Depends on the curves involved, I think is what it comes.
No, my curves weren't, it wasn't.
We just had, we just had eleven dollar one in uh, really this year, so.
I know, I know you mentioned.
You should, you should use them.
I, I did about five estimates. They were sixteen was the best.
They didn't follow D O T design standards. But you got eleven. No way.
Jeff said they did a good job because he has to go review it.
Right, but if we're putting New York State D O T design standards in, which was in the five fifteen document. You're not gonna get eleven. Or eleven dollars, I'm sorry, eleven dollars. I would be shocked.
Um, me too.
Uh, well, it's between six dollars reimbursement and what, seven dollars reimbursement or eight dollars reimbursement per. So again, we'll, we'll take a look at that a little bit more carefully to see. But you get where I'm going with this. We can determine what the grant amount would be that we receive here. In terms of what the reimbursement level would be, what the loan level would be. And then, you know, obviously loans are gonna, they're meant to be paid back if, if we do go for payback. So that becomes a revolving scenario instead of just firming out money. In that scenario, so you wouldn't ask for as much for the loan as you would on the reimbursement. Uh, from the grant because there's a life span for that.
So the other thing that.
We're working on that part.
The other thing Wade has said is that, um, it's okay to use grants. To fix sidewalks, even if the people are liable, like it's.
Well, that's one thing we didn't actually put in this code though, to be clear.
Yeah, you can add that.
Yeah, that was.
He said it's okay already.
We just kept missing that one for some reason. So we'll add that.
I kind of think we, you know, and I don't know whether this is in the code or outside of the code. But if we're gonna get a grant, that should be focused on. Gaps inside.
It's true, it's the best use because nobody, otherwise. As we advocated for before. Ideally, to get the network we want, we would have to um, tell, put in the code that people with gaps between two other sides, not just in the middle of nowhere, but. Between two other sidewalks. Um, should be required to uh, build a sidewalk and we'd.
We're hearing the last topic I, I kind of want to talk about, so you're, you're in that zone right now. I don't think this version of code five would think of necessarily embraced what that intent is about gaps, okay?
No, it's not in there.
I'm not talking about false nav on the one side of the street where it's technically gonna be virtually impossible in certain areas to get a dick is pulled, movements and everything else. And there is at least a sidewalk on one side of the street that's continuous. I'm talking about the areas where you can fleet, but there's just a full gap.
Like a mall that.
And how do we force the hand in that situation? I don't think it's well written and so I'm open to ideas. Not so heavy handed necessarily, but at least something to get us moving in the right direction in that one.
So again, um. You know, according to N I com. I'd be comfortable. Saying that if there is a property with a gap. That we, it's their, their responsibility, but we would reimburse them a hundred percent to put it in. And then, and we can't do that.
Yeah.
Well, according to N I com, we can.
Well, A, which, yeah, ask him. I'd like to know.
I did.
No, 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 because I asked.
Well, I asked him.
There's somebody, yeah.
To get that.
I, what he said.
I'm not trying to be obstinate about.
No, no, I know, well, we, we do have to settle it, but.
Yeah, I did ask to send it here. I think that's inherently unfair.
I agree. It's like people paid for their sidewalk.
Yeah.
So if you have a sidewalk, you're only getting fifty percent reimbursement, but if you don't, you're gonna get a free ride.
For me.
I get, I get what you're saying.
I'm comfortable with that because you are adding a, and we just disagree, uh, you're adding a liability to a property where none existed. So it's not as if it's cost free and they are now liable for maintenance going forward. And maybe they bought the property.
Because when you don't have the sidewalk, it's technically not a sidewalk liability.
No, that's what I'm saying, but we're, we're forcing them to.
I thought you were saying the other way around.
No, we're forcing them to take one on, which is a burden to them. And so. Make it easy to begin that process by giving them a higher reimbursement. I'd be, I'm, I'm comfortable with that approach.
I can be all if I was, I came in here and I said, okay, you got paid a hundred percent. I'm gonna take my sidewalk out. And then when you come back, you can pay all of that.
Well, we wouldn't let people do that.
Look, look, there is, there is a slight equity issue with how that would be handled. Let's, I think this is one of those, let's confirm first in I com what the limitation would be and then we, we decide amongst ourselves.
To me, there's an equity issue now because the people who have sidewalks have the burden, have the liability. The people without sidewalks, they're scot free. They're the worst condition.
They also went into. Buying that home knowing that they either had a sidewalk or not, so I don't know how unequitable it is.
Well, that's why I'm saying give them the sidewalk essentially, not, not cost them to put it in, but then they're just like everyone else on their street. They gotta maintain it.
I think my point is somebody who purchases a home with a sidewalk knows what they're getting into, that they, that you're gonna maintain it.
Yeah, right. Well, to be honest too, it, for, they have to allow us to put a sidewalk in. So if they already have a big issue with maintaining it. They're just not gonna allow us.
Especially, well, if there's no.
Lots of volume.
We would have to determine if it was right away.
We know that's tricky.
Well, it's someplace.
Costs money, exactly.
Um, another reason to have a benefit assessment for you to have fun so that we need to do things like that.
Ship sale. Okay, I can see the sale on the distance.
See where the money is then.
Yeah, I, right now, again, the reason why we're trying to front load the reimbursement in the schedule change. So that we can work on this other stuff a little slower and make sure you're doing it right. Is because we did put fifty thousand dollars away fully plus ten retreats. Uh, you know, for this year. So we do have reimbursement money sitting there waiting to be used and it didn't get fairly touched this year. So let's, you know, rolling it over doesn't do as much good at this point either. People are willing to go out there and actually get their sidewalks and I'm without a loan component. I mean, the problem is gonna be the next part of it, which is, okay, somebody doesn't have the ability to pay for that sidewalk, even the fifty percent. So how do we? Get them into a position to do it so when we knock them out, they would say, you gotta fix it. We're not killing them in that situation.
Right, well, that's, that's always been the challenge. So, and so I'm okay also reimbursing them at a higher rate. If we can afford it, if we can't, I'm okay with a benefit assessment that might be less than what we initially proposed, but it would generate a pool of reserved funds. To enable people to afford to fix their sidewalks because they're not paying even fifty percent, they're paying less.
Yeah, but what it ends up is we gotta look at the numbers. Is because. Fifty thousand isn't gonna keep us on a fifteen year schedule. Maybe we contribute a hundred and then figure fifty percent of a hundred, two hundred thousand might get us close. Um. So we need to generate a hundred thousand dollars in revenue. And I don't think we should be just taking that from water revenue. Uh, because we're gonna need that. Uh, in a few years and um, not only for the payment on a million dollar loan, but. As we get into the other capital improvement plan for water and sewer infrastructure. I don't think there's gonna be a lot of excess cash.
I, I think the, the realization we gotta get reached here is that our tax rates compared to Scotia, for instance, are about. About a third because there's different utilization rates at play, but.
You mean the water fees?
No, our, our tax.
Huge trade of tax.
And water fees are less, much less.
Well, if I, I, let's just focus on why our taxes are lower and. I think more or less because we do have the ability to budget. The excess profit from outside users into. The pool of money we're able to use. Also, the fire contracts help matters too. Um, you know, and we're trying to get those finished up with both towns and make sure that we're covered to get a ladder truck over the next five years because that's a necessity. We've seen some of the costs for maintenance on the current one. We can't just keep doing that.
Didn't we buy a ladder truck a year or two then?
No, that was a different truck. Yeah, it was, it was an expensive truck. It wasn't that ladder truck. So, and we got the pumper also already, already in order, but you get my point that, you know, those two aspects have helped us. I think even as said, what, five forty range or thereabouts per thousand? Um, and so, you know. Sidewalk. You know, some of the, some of that extra water money probably has gone, it's sidewalks. Really wanna think about that. It, it, there's a couple of different ways. It's, it's either the money that's being dumped into the fund balance right now, or it's being budgeted. And then falling in there later. You can look at it either way. But, you know, we're not budgeting correctly. We're doing it with expectations of actually using it and then it doesn't always get used all of it.
So how much money are you comfortable? Taking out a general fund balance for? This project.
Well, I don't know if we even need to. Yeah, we gotta do an assessment of the actual costs here and we have now some basis to look at it and that's what I plan to do over the next couple of weeks as I get attentive ready. So.
I mean, just take it out of the budget.
Let me see, let me see where we are uh, right now.
I mean, I could see this year as being a litmus test. A to C, how many people actually apply? B, they're gonna find out, we're gonna find out what the going rate is.
Yeah, you, you don't necessarily need to front the money. We can take it out of the fund balance at, on as needed basis. If we have a. Ground swell of money, uh, you know, reimbursement requested. On one hand. Horrible, on the other hand, great, you know, you, you've looked at it both ways.
But that's, that's only one half of the equation. The other half of the equation is our eighty eight plan. And we have to get X number of miles per year done. So that's another funding element. And again, I go back. We probably should have a sidewalk reserve account. So that the funds are there. Because now we have a plan. We have to get the plan done.
Well, we, if we get grant money for it, that would definitely get done with the app.
That's a huge if.
It always is.
Oh, it always is and let's not rely on the if.
This is multi-year thing, a grant might be once for a year, it's not, or two years, but it's not gonna be.
Well, basically what we'd be going for is a actual five to ten year approach in that grant so that we can see we could get. That chunk taken care of, what, what the intended chunk would be. So we, we've got, again, we've got homework to do with respect to that. In the meantime, we're covered for reimbursements for fifty percent for the time being because we haven't touched, we've already set aside. And then for, you know, probably the very, very start of the next fiscal year, but we should have an idea by the time we do budget where we're going with this. So that we need to start figuring where to. Get money from, we can. Do it somewhat. I think logistically.
So. So just a review, we're, we're gonna start with the five fifteen draft. We are okay, um. Putting in something about removal of sidewalks is not allowed.
Only temporary, but like.
With all that. Are we okay with, um. With enforcing uh, construction sites where there's gaps or what are we doing about gaps other than?
I, I think. First, we're gonna see if the hundred percent thing is even plausible. And then we kind of gotta figure out if we're going to treat it like a defective sidewalk. Defect in sidewalk, I should call it. Uh, and make it enforceable enough at that point, but also we have to be cognizant that. It would have to be based on the fact that there's sufficient right of way without pole movements, et cetera, that we require, talking twenty plus thousand dollars a pole movement.
We, we actually came up with wording on this. That didn't make it in, but um, I'll just read it to you, see if it's in the ballpark.
Everybody's just sending it around if we could, said, read it, cause I'm gonna be better reading that probably.
Well, yeah, I mean, it just talks about. Um, something you mentioned, you know, in a street with a sidewalk on any portion of the same side of this. Street, a sidewalk must be constructed according to a separate schedule, status, et cetera. The village board may waive this requirement by majority vote if it determines it is infeasible to construct the sidewalk along property frontage to require standard specifications. Or provided the property owner applies for a waiver.
Some guidance as to what infeasible means uh, in that situation such as not sufficient right of way.
That could be like a D P W determination.
That's something like that, or give them guidance at least in law.
If it's a bank.
Basically what.
Yeah, exactly. So you can't put it left.
Yeah.
Or, but you know, stand there, you're like, oh, you gotta install that still.
Yeah, well, was, was it in this that we were saying if you're gonna build something that you had to install a sidewalk? Is that or is it in another?
Yes, that actually made it in that if you are building new construction.
Building from it.
A sidewalk is required.
A C O, you need to get a sidewalk.
Yeah. Yeah, pursuit, except we're good about, I can see unless.
Yeah, again, if, if feasible and in a neighborhood where, uh, sidewalks are generally found, I guess. And that, that's the other wording that's gotta be, I think, massaged better, because what is the neighborhood where, where neighborhood sidewalks are normally found? It's tough to define that. I guess we have certain areas we could flag as those areas, like on the hills and. Uh, where you, yeah, then, yeah.
The other piece Sean flagged with, for the short term fee change is. To specify that the sidewalk must be to ADA requirements or DOT requirements. Because right now, I think it says four feet. We wanna make sure it doesn't say four feet, but.
Well, it's, it's five feet where applicable, I think, uh, or we're able, I think. If you're forced into a situation where you have five feet or nothing, then it's advisable to still go to four feet if you're.
That's, that's within DOT design standards.
Yeah.
I would make it very clean and just refer to DOT designs.
That's, I agree with you there.
But, but doing it with the fee change, like, you know, you want people to use that fee change for DOT standards.
Yeah.
Sidewalk, like do it in the early, the phase one of what we're doing here.
Well, do I, do I go to ADA or do I go to DOT, or is DOT already embracing ADA? Uh, that's.
Yeah.
So that's gonna be your homework on this one. I had to tell you, you're gonna have to give us a good guidance as to what that means. Because we can look at those technical standards all day long.
You mean those, those spec sheets there?
You know, Sean. As, as a lawyer, you can appreciate, you don't wanna read my tweets, I wanna read your texts.
There's text here too, that I think from Sean, says to meet ADA and NICE that requirements sidewalk must be five feet width. With exception for sections or physical constraints, et cetera. Uh, other permanent charge of rent owner from doing so, ADA requirements include curbing. At ramps, detectable barriers, also maximum slope of sidewalk and reveal between pads and roadway crossings. So.
Yeah.
Some of this work's been done, so we, I'll just forward it to you guys.
Yeah, I, I, I think honestly, the first first step is we all go through the five fifteen draft one more time. Maybe I set up another Google sheet, uh, or document rather, uh, this weekend where we can start dumping in. Might be a little bit longer than the other one, but obviously this is a little bit more, longer of a law to handle here. And we just start putting, okay, you know, this, this still needs to be fixed, or this, this is lacking something based on what we talked here. And we move forward that way. And then obviously, we'll still have more discussion after that, like we do with parks, but at least we. We have shown, we've all read this, we're all comfortable with what it's saying, or not comfortable with what it's saying. And we all start moving in that direction.
I think that's a helpful format, because then instead of going through fifty email, it's like all on the same page.
Yeah, that was good. I liked the way you did that. That was good.
It may be a little tougher here, is there a lot of subsections, I think, compared to parks? Except for that B fifteen, B twenty, uh, you know, it's going out, but still, we broke that down. Uh, so we'll, uh, we'll, let me figure out the best way to handle that too, either, either this weekend or early next week, I'll get that too.
Again, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna restate, so it's food for thought.
Yep.
Um, still fifty percent reimbursement across the board, however. The benefit fee, we came up for basically a hundred percent. Um, was, or to generate roughly two hundred thousand based on existing sidewalks and that scale. If you divide it by two, you're generating a hundred thousand a year for sidewalks. And that could essentially be the half we use. Um, and that doesn't mean we have to touch fund balance.
Um, but, let's see again where the math lays on this. And again, I've got a guide now as to what we're going for to ADA. So begin to work those numbers as part of budget. And see where you begin punting that.
And I think the only other thing I'd say we really should. I don't know if it's well defined, you know, somewhere in, in the, you know, whether we're, we're gonna refer to the ADA plan in the code. Or just simply say that we're going to, you know, our list of priorities are essentially the worst first as identified in the ADA.
Could you put that in the schedule, rather than?
Yeah, I, I don't, yeah.
What if it gets updated?
Should cite the ADA claim in the law, because that is still a changing doctrine over the years. But it's a policy outside the law.
How, how will we reconcile the identification of the worst sidewalks with the high, the road plan? Because they may not correspond, you know, they have bad sidewalks, that ideally that would be the top priority.
I'll tell you something though, Ben, if you look around some of these streets, aside from Route fifty, let's say, okay, which is not our road, so that that's a different ADA. I think you see a commonality between bad streets, bad sidewalks, that it.
I'm, I'm not saying that there isn't.
Yeah.
But there's also cases where there's bad sidewalks and they were repaved in the last five years. So. And there's, there's no actual pure correlation. I think there's anecdotal correlation.
But you can see my restraint again, why it wasn't handled in the, in the moment, because you put all this money into breaking streets. And then bill, oh, what's happening with, uh, uh, chips funding this year? Is it getting sliced or not?
I don't, I don't know. I haven't heard anything on our end, but.
I know a lot of education, like a little slice and hoping chips doesn't.
I can tell you this, so our conference has been doing a bunch of press, uh, press conferences. I know there is interest from, uh, assembly Democrats to be urging for chips to be restored as well. So I, I, I think there's a good chance it could be, it's just carrot. That's what they use chips for, is negotiating carrot, which is frustrating.
I do know on a statewide level, we are not getting any funding for capacity improvements.
So even more robberies, et cetera, or.
Um, well, those are, they come out of a different bag of money, because you determine around about, uh, it's H C funds. So they're determined out of, uh, hey, are we gonna solve a public safety issue there?
All right, let's go back to sidewalks.
Now, if. Well, it, it, that's important though, because it also talks, it talks about the breadth of, uh, roads, and we're gonna be able to repay.
Right, yeah. Let's, let's say there's not a good cor, strong correlation between the roads and the sidewalks. And there are a lot of bad sidewalks that are not scheduled. I would think our priority is the worst sidewalks first, that's the ADA plans.
And we've said that, it's just.
So that would be.
We're, we're gonna do, we're gonna do part of column A, part of column B, basically.
Well, as long as we're X number of miles every year. If it's not on the roads that we're paving, then it's gonna be, we're gonna address the worst first. Because there's no correlation then, so the only thing we should do.
Those D, we should know in May, the whole idea of doing a May, so this, this was the other approach, is that. If to utilize the paving schedule using May to identify the roads we're gonna pave. Go up those sidewalks or the streets, see what sidewalks are needing repair. You know, giving the information, here's how you can get reimbursement, here's how you can get your loan if you need it, all that stuff. And then we'll be able to tell the numbers, linear miles, whether feet, whether you wanna call. Uh, that we'll be doing and know how much more we would have essentially to meet the point seven miles or whatever it is. You know, to go tackle the worst. I, I don't think generally the streets we do will ever hit the point seven miles for the worst, or for. Probably like point four or point five, so then another point two is out there to get done that year, the worst stuff, realistically.
Yeah, and I think if generally we have a policy, is that, well, after we look at our paving schedule for the year. We're gonna look at the ADA plan and anything that, what is the worst, orange, red? Yeah, those are the ones we would tackle, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think.
I think we're in the same age on that stuff, that you understand now better where I'm going, that there is a reason it ties to paving schedule.
I under. Complete street. I, I, I know the concept.
Yeah, you've heard, you've heard.
With the concept, um, but, uh, but there's also, there's also efficacy to, you know. If there's something's a really bad problem, because let's face it, the ones that are in super bad shape, they are a public safety issue. And just to do the ones because they happen, you know, there's no benefit to doing them side by side. If anything, there could potentially be a liability or a hangup, because if somebody tears out a sidewalk and puts it in the curb. The day before you're going to pay, that's problematic. So that's, there's a lot of things to consider.
Idea is to give a gap of time, so that when, by December first, you're done with that sidewalk, so that in October first, we go in there and. Do what we need to do finally. Don't, don't let overlap, that's the whole thing. And so again, it's gonna take a year or two to get it perfectly in sync. It just does, that's.
Right. I, I guess my other thought would be is that as a policy, um, we're only gonna fix on that street we're paving. You know, I forget how the scale is, whether it's three or four, the best, the worst, or zero and one are the worst. One and two of the, we fix one and twos. If, if it's something else, let's not waste our money on that and let's circle back.
I, I get it, yeah. Now, if somebody wants to voluntarily, you know, do the sidewalk, I don't think we necessarily say no. But we're not gonna knock on the door and say you must do it and spur that.
Yeah, and that's, that's the only issue I have with the open invitations. If somebody's got one pad, you know, that falls into repair, repair issue, and I think there not, needs to be something in the code. Who assesses if it's a full replacement or if it's a repair? And I don't know if that's DPW, or who is it, but you have to do that.
So you, you wanna go in the direction of a needs-based reimbursement, possibly? Needs based in terms of need of the sidewalk to be repaired or more installed.
Pad, okay, replace that pad and we'll reinbase version.
Well, I would think the, the scale of the one and twos, like, are more serious and would require maybe a replacement, because.
Well, it's tricky, because even within ones and twos, you may have fifty feet of sidewalk and twenty is a one, twenty feet is a one and.
But you still would want it due for uniformity, so the whole fifty, and that's, that's where it gets dicey.
Right.
It does get dicey there. But it, but let's, okay, but let's consider the approach on it. I get where you're going with that. And I, I'm not necessarily opposed to your thought on it, it's just, I would wanna see at least if there's a huge chunk of somebody's sidewalk. That needs repair, but the whole thing probably gets done. And we're not like picking out one panel and saying, oh, that was okay, these other three aren't, well, redo the whole.
Well, we're, we're having, we're gonna choose different feet.
Yeah.
We'll have two different fee schedules, right? One for pair, one for placement, do they cost different or no?
Uh, I don't think we, we should.
Oh, that's, you used to say.
We've put a limit for property, I think, is where we've been going with it. So maybe that's one way to protect ourselves too.
I mean, to be honest, like, what really is gonna happen is most people are, if they've got a bad pad or whatever. They're gonna rip out two pads and replace it. So it's, it's basically installation, but it's not installation of the entire life. So, I know.
So you don't wanna separate the.
I don't, I don't, I think it just overcomplicates it, yeah. So, um, I mean, we're gonna have enough administrative issues.
Yeah, let me, let me do this, because there's a lot more, you, you come with this, I think. And so let, let's take a lot of these points, maybe the rebox this meeting, uh, to make sure we got everything down, let's find an open issue. We'll get the spreadsheet of stuff out or documented out. Well, okay, quick, only because I wanna make sure public comment, every public comment session happened.
Um, this is an oldie but. Um, when a house is sold, um.
There's just, there's no easy way title wise. I, I get where you're going with it, before you get out of your mouth. Title has to basically know to look for it. And so.
Just, just for people watching, the, the idea was when a property is sold, in order to, um. Buy it or transfer property, um, and it has no sidewalk. The buyer and seller have to negotiate who's gonna put in the sidewalk, the sidewalk has to be put in upon transfer or sale. Now Sean, you were talking about how there's a water.
Yeah, but we have failures of water meter closings happening periodically too. So title companies are not being eligible, even with our water closings, to make sure they're happening.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz I was looking for some kind of mechanism.
That, that is a painful one, because responsibility is.
Well, how, what's the percent? Is it a huge problem or a little?
We, we probably get one every couple of months, which is, right now, it's not, there aren't many closings going on with the nature of, uh, the economy going. Right now with, with interest rates. So it's, it's just not an easy scenario here.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, but I think it's one of those things that's, it's not easy to start out. But, and we may not, um, have a perfect system, but we could probably develop a good system. Um, where even if we blast out a letter. And say, hey, there's a change in the law, and this is what it means to every homeowner, every property owner. And you're duly notified. Um, at that point, uh, you know, negligence to the law isn't, isn't excused.
I also wanna take a look at legality of that too. That's probably not an ICOM issue, that probably assistance, because I don't know. If imposing another hurdle on closing is gonna be easily justifiable on the law, in those situations, but we can find out.
Well, sort of like a septic system that's not up to grade, you know?
Right, that's, that's a health, safety, welfare. More than this would probably be considered in that respect, because then also the question is, you know, who, who's creating the sidewalk? And what, what, would be able.
No, no, I'm saying when there's no sidewalk, when there's no sidewalk, that's when you get to it.
Okay, I, okay, I see what you're saying. Okay, so.
Just when there's no sidewalk, not when there's repairs.
Let's, let's see where we can get that, uh, to go to.
Yeah, just, just in general, what Wade has said is, because sidewalks are a public good. Municipalities have a lot of leeway about how to address the public good. It's basically whatever we, more or less, whatever we think. Makes sense, we can do. There's, so there's not that, according to him, there's not the fifty percent issue and, and all that stuff. E, even the liability and the benefit assessment.
But you're also a pitch for, if you do something that's going to affect property values, because there's another burden to. You know, transfer, transact.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying in general, like as we approach this, he says municipalities have a lot of flexibility.
I, I get, I get what you mean, I, just thinking.
Just that, all the issues.
You know, as a lawyer had here for a second, which I'm not supposed to do, but you know, he can't avoid doing it, I can't avoid doing it, there are things we do. It's, to see the extra burden is always something where. You don't know, you're not used to a false spot transaction that you're slipping into that. People aren't used to our water closing methodology, for instance, a, you know, old water system and how it works for us. Because the way we do it isn't the way other municipalities necessarily do it, in that, so. It's, it's a learning curve, and we gotta just see how to practically go. And maybe even talk to some, uh, real estate brokers and title companies to say, if we did this, how would it play out? Would it create issues?
So for that grant we, we referenced, can we focus on properties that don't have sidewalks as part of that grant?
I, I, we could, I, I'm looking at a more simplified, you know, way to justify the grant, which is saying. We have a lot of crappy sidewalks, and we need to go handle those crappy sidewalks.
I mean, so what would be the approach to no sidewalks that you think would work?
I, I, ask is an open question, so I, I really wanna hear some views here, and I think we've got some ideas.
Well, if you wanna hear the view from the state, gaps in sidewalks are the biggest public safety hazard. On their priority list. Um, even, you know, bad sidewalks obviously are, are another, but no sidewalk is a huge.
State always doing in their own gaps all the time, I.
But maybe that's the way to do it, is to get grants for these places, but it does then require. Um, that a mandate, yes, we're putting a sidewalk in your property where there wasn't one, and I think that's perfectly reasonable for a public.
What you do is when you put a grant, also get you, you cite the missing sidewalks along with the, you know. Destroying sidewalks essentially, and say, we have a whole ball of wax, a bad sidewalk system in our village that needs to be taken care of. But, uh, it, it's a, you know, somewhat low income, uh, village, and therefore it's a tough thing to do. The, the tax, current tax level doesn't justify, uh, us getting involved, taking on the liability, et cetera. But the low income folks who are property owners will face burdens, and so that justifies the grant to a certain degree. Then from there, once we get the money, as long as we're staying with the confines that we put in the application, we're okay.
So are you, are you comfortable if we get grant money to require sidewalks to go in where there aren't any?
I, I think what we were talking already is we wanted to create a methodology here for areas where it's feasible and accepted. So, oh, to get those, that network in, yes. It's just a question of making sure that we're doing it in a way that appreciates, that it's not always possible, that there's, you know, clipping on some, you know.
Right, right.
But there is, and stuff like that.
Well, mine is the corner of Boston, that's for sale right now.
Oh, right, yeah.
They're gonna, they're gonna put sidewalk on the top.
But are we willing, are we willing to, to face, face the challenge of there's a homeowner who. We want a sidewalk in this, like, multi-ad site, and there's a gap, that's an important gap to fill. Because student kids go up and down that area. What?
So multi-advies us.
Okay, that makes it easier. But say there's a homeowner that doesn't want, want, uh, their, their property to have a sidewalk. I'm comfortable saying it's a public good, we're putting in a sidewalk, and, and then the funding will figure out, are people comfortable with that? For the public good, putting in a sidewalk if some, if a private owner says, I don't want one.
If it's within the public, public right of way, there's not much they can say or do for that respect, okay?
All right, so.
It's, it's the question of where a whole. It's, it's the question of where a pulse got to be moved or.
No, no, yeah, yeah, there's all the logistics, but just in principle, if it's in the right ways, we're just gonna do it, and then.
But it, it, akin to, hey, your sidewalk's damaged, destroyed, you've gotta go fix it, to me, it's not really that different in that respect, because. All along, and I've said this to you for months now. My biggest concern is that we're basically going and knocking on a door and putting a hammer over the head, basically saying, oh, go fix that sidewalk. And it's thousands of dollars, you've gotta spend right now, go do it, and we had no ability to say to them, hey. We're not trying to be jerks about it, we've set up a system that's gonna be nice and easy for you.
Yeah, I think we're all on the same, we're all on the same page with that, I'm, I'm comfortable paying a hundred percent for a new sidewalk for somebody, personally. Well, not, not personally.
And I'm comfortable with the fact that people that might have a gap in the sidewalk. Saying, well, we'll pay half. We'll be like, oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I, it, it's a fair.
I don't think they're gonna do it, but.
I hope they do. No, I think they will.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think we have to go a hundred percent, and again, I think a lot of people would be upset if, if we started.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's.
Now, out of respect, I know that a couple of people have leave to rent six, tens, fifteen, or six zero, so. Let me, let me just throw up a brief public comment here, uh, I'm not gonna try to time it, but just brief, if anybody's got public comment. In the room or on Zoom, if you're on Zoom, uh, this would be a good time to raise your hand, if you have something you wanna add. Anybody in the room? See somebody waving accordingly, please.
Um, just to remind you, the tax grant we applied for was to fill in sidewalk gaps, that's one of the grants that's available. Um, they don't pay for repairs, cuz they. They, the individuals or the village should do that. Um, I still think a benefit assessment. Charge everybody, it's a public good. Um, would be much simpler, you're gonna be arranging a loan, there's a lot of work with that, um. You know, uh, if the village took it over, you could. You know, none of this would be really an issue. Um, I don't think right of way issues are. That prevalent in the village from looking at those old maps. There's a few places, yeah, but most, most. Roads, you know, have sufficient right of way to put a sidewalk, but most roads around here have sidewalks.
Thank you, uh, Jersey, anything, Dr. Stip, or Maryland, point?
Yeah, uh, James, yours is that, um. I, I know we discussed since May, last May or two minutes ago. But I. I have a lot of concerns, like Prospect Street, there's no sidewalks at all, you got the county fair that you. You're gonna make them put sidewalks on both sides? How do you decide one side or the other?
And that's, like I said, I, I, I'm asking more as a question.
And some of these developments that are within the village don't have sidewalks, they're not gonna be required to get them. To my knowledge. I did, I, I did a little survey way back way months ago. I asked people, you know, this proposed law was gonna go into effect. And, um. A lot of people were very unhappy about being forced, and I say forced, to put a sidewalk in. At their expense, no matter what the reimbursement was. Plus the added liability. Because you have to maintain that sidewalk and clear it, which they don't have to do now, if they don't have a sidewalk. I get many are disrepair, yes, I get it. And some of those, um, also have property that border the street. If a sidewalk went in. Would they have to curb it in too? So that's an added expense. Um, as you mentioned, and I, I didn't know this before you mentioned, the village has, oh, I can't remember, it's it, um. But many parcels of land, so if. Us village residents are gonna have sidewalks. The village has the follow suit.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be expensive. Cuz I know in Malta Ave, I walked it out. And I did a, a guess, uh, but there's no sidewalks on the one side. It'd be about twenty thousand dollars. Or more.
Uh, one thing to consider, maybe wording that states that if sidewalks available on one side of the street and there's safe crosswalk ability, uh, within that block. That there's not a mandatory need on the side.
And that's actually our, our late, last version of the law was.
Yeah.
You know, with the benefit assessment, cuz we could only stretch it so far, was if there's, like you just said, if there's sidewalk on one side. You don't have to put it on the other side, but when there, if there isn't any sidewalk, is a good question, how to decide if, if you want a sidewalk on there. And I guess you just look at the topography and, and where the telephone poles are.
That's the other, Prospect Street, I mean, both sides of the street, it's gonna be so expensive, more expensive, I should say, for those people that put a sidewalk. Because the grade of the, the ones.
And the other, the other thing, the other thing we.
I think if the ADA is approved, to be honest with you, because.
You know, I don't know how you do it.
The, the other proposal was, we were always assuming that the village would assume the curb, except that it's very expensive, the curb. That, I mean, at least, that's a question, I guess, for this law.
Again, uh, today's, let's generate the questions we've got, because we gotta get more answers. And, you know, yeah, it's been a year, but we've learned some things that are some hurdles.
I forget if the five fifteen. It might have had us taken over the curbs, even back in five fifteen.
Curb reimbursement wasn't currently, I forgot.
Yeah, I.
The curb reimbursement is less than the sidewalk. I, I would, weird.
I would consider. Us just taking maintenance responsibility of the curves, because to replace a curb is a whole different animal, cuz you have to go down. At least twelve inches with the curbing, um, and then there has to be sub base underneath that. Um, that, that's gonna be something beyond. You know, uh, the average contractor that's putting aside.
And that, um. The general public, if they're putting a curb in. They're not gonna be damaging the curb, it's, and I hate to say it, but snowplow, I mean, what else could damage a curb?
We got a couple of hands up there, so Maryland, uh, Maric, Maricelli, yes?
Um, this is, uh, three nights ago, I was here for another meeting, just, um, you know, a comment about. Advanced notice, very short. Advanced notice for this meeting. Which doesn't help with the transparency and getting other people aware of what's going on. I only found out about the meeting because I was looking for the documents that were mentioned. On the Monday night meeting, and they still weren't up on the village website, so I looked at the schedule to only define a meeting. Very quickly called for tonight. So I need to find out if the five fifteen version. Which is the top of the, uh, conversation right now for sidewalks, if that document is still posted. On the village website, if not, I would say, you know, that needs to get out there as soon as possible. Um, I think it's important, if the code is absent, discussing. You know, removal of sidewalks without replacing it immediately, yes, it should be addressed, because that's way too easy. To remove a sidewalk and then just pave over the area. Um, and I do agree DPW has too many tasks, it's nice. For them to offer to pick that stuff up, but it's not necessary, and most contractors are taking care of that. Um, like the idea of a grant, like the idea of filling in the gaps, um. And the fifty percent reimbursement is great, it would be helpful. Since it's, um, going to be correlated to when the paving's done. To get that information out even a year in advance, I think this last minute stuff. With the village, with programming, with changes in code, with, um, you know, um. The asphalt schedule, that's, that's gotta be way in advance, not just a last minute.
Tell it, tell it to the state, Maryland, because that's where, we, we base on a funding at the end of the day.
Yeah, but no.
You have a, you have a scurrying always to figure out if he's got enough, uh.
It's important that the village plan, the plan way in advance.
I mean, he has a, a one-year plan, right?
No, he's got a eleven-year plan, the problem is say, we don't have a certain level of chips funding to cover it. Then we've budgeted him a certain amount, and so he doesn't have enough to cover all those streets, and then has to pick out which ones. He feels are in most needed at that given time, so it's a wish list by all means, uh. And he tries to achieve that wish list every year, and it's, it's, I get what she's saying, but at the same time, you know, it's one of those, it sounds good on paper moments. And then you realize when you're actually sitting and watching this play out, make sure you're not letting yourself out of this shot there, so.
When did the, did it get posted on the website? It was pretty late.
I'm not sure, but this was approved in the, it was.
A while ago.
Second meeting in, anywhere.
But it, but it wasn't, I remember looking for it, I don't know, yeah, just a few days, it wasn't on.
Let me go to Nathan on, uh, Zoom here real quick, uh, Nathan, I need you to turn this up, so just test me, you have volume real quick, you can.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, give me one second, I'll get it a little louder, go ahead now.
Hi, Nathan Ward, one Hyde Boulevard. I think if the village is going to make changes to the sidewalk code, the changes should be more than just moving their reimbursement out of the code. And into a fee schedule. The village has neglected sidewalks for far too long, either by planting incorrect trees next to sidewalks, or failing to enforce the code. Um, this has resulted in non-existent sidewalks or impassable and unsafe sidewalks. So I believe the village should take over the construction and repair of the sidewalks and have a twenty-year plan. Uh, to schedule and address all the problems that the village has neglected to, uh, fix over the past years. I know the counterargument is that the village's insurance costs will go up, and the village has to pay prevailing wages. My counter to that is that it's worth the extra money to have safe sidewalks and to actually have sidewalks improved. I don't wanna wait while a property owner is saving up money to replace their sidewalks, because sooner or later. Someone's gonna get hit by a car while they're walking in the street, or fall and really hurt themselves. If the village doesn't wanna go down this path, then the village should set up a loan program, so no one is forced to pay thousands of dollars all at once. And then if the villagers wanna go down that path, then the village should at least pay for the damaged sidewalks that the trees. That the village trees cause. Um, and then the other benefit for the village, uh, taking over the sidewalks and installing and repairing sidewalks. Is that it attracts businesses set up in the village and attracts customers. Uh, this, an example of that is my wife and I drove out to Skylerville last summer, and we were pleasantly surprised that. Uh, the downtown area of Skylerville had all new sidewalks. So after we had our dinner there, we decided to walk. On the new sidewalks, and we found another business that we popped into. Uh, so that could be the same thing that could happen in the Village of Boston Spa, but. Uh, you know, there's non-existent sidewalks in our downtown area. Lastly, uh, I'm happy that the DPW installed curb ramps. Around the village last year, but I believe. Most of them are not ADA compliant, uh, the requirement that I think is. Not meeting the mark is where the street meets the ramp needs to be less than a fourth of an inch. Um, I'm not an ADA expert, so, um. I would just have the DPW go around and investigate all the curb ramps that they installed last year. And if they aren't compliant, then replace them or fix them. Um, in two thousand twenty-two, the DPW did replace a lot of curb ramps on High Street. And I think those are done correctly, so it, it just needs to be less than a fourth of an inch, and right now I measured, and one is like, oh, oh, an inch, so. Um, it doesn't meet the requirements, and thanks.
Few things, uh, Sean, you're, you're, you wanna address that?
Yeah, my understanding on, of curb ramps is that. It should be less than an inch reveal. But, um, I've never heard of a quarter inch reveal.
That, that, just some crown movement would take it to a quarter inch routinely. Um, uh, with respect to, a, a couple of things generally, uh, Nathan. Uh, the idea of changing the reimbursement, uh, law is just a temporary fix, so that we can get people that wanna start doing their sidewalks, that are awaiting. The ability to do it at one, put the full bill, put the reimbursement. Uh, not, that don't require a loan, so, you know, they're wanting to go out and start doing their sidewalks, let's let them go do it, we've budgeted money for. Uh, with respect to street trees, cities in law, uh, the five fifteen, I believe, that's street trees. Uh, that cause, uh, even the village trees, uh, are gonna be our, uh, responsibility ultimately. Um, the one pool, obviously, for discussing that, that's already being, uh, embraced here, so I, I think we're all on the same page. It just to cover the main points you had there, so I'm going to. If we're talking there, and I see, uh. Three eight zero seven seven eight, I, I. Always nervous to do this, but we're, we're a lot of talk, you know, how do you, uh, quick trigger on this? Go ahead. You talk.
Uh, my name is Foreman Phillips.
Hi, Foreman.
I live one oh one Hyde Boulevard. Find this talk very interesting, because where I live reflects a lot of the things, of the issues that you're discussing. In particular, though, I wanna point out. Some obvious good parts about it. The Village of Boston Spa has a neighborhood elementary school, I think that's a prize in today's world. You'd like most kids to go far away to school, but when you're six, seven, eight years old, an elementary. School is really nice, one your parents can walk you to. Another thing is that Hyde Boulevard, I do, do, I have only lived here fifteen years, but I have asked other people. About Hyde Boulevard, Hyde Boulevard used to be a dead-end street. It is no longer. It's a main street where people coming from Malta can get to the northern part of the village without, I think, go, go to Route fifty at all. And there are no sidewalks on Hyde Boulevard. It's a dangerous street at times. Although the police have been making a point to slow down drivers, and. It's started to change, you're not, but we still get trailer trucks and speed, speedsters. In fact, if you enter the village from East High Street. Uh, you hardly know you're in the village, cuz there's a soccer field on one side, and there's no curb or sidewalk on the other. And it's dangerous, sometimes very dangerous. It ought to be a priority. And it leads me, and the last thing I wanted to say is. I'm eighty-nine years, eighty-six years old, I walk a lot. I know my neighborhood. There are two nice developments who have solved the sidewalk problem very well. Pleasant Street has sidewalks on both sides. The new houses built, every one, the contractor has built a sidewalk in front of it. It's a very friendly street, you'll pardon the pun. The other's Kalene Manor, Kalene Manor is designed with. Putting a cul, um, call this a, a road with a loop at the end, it's not, doesn't lead anywhere except into the development. And the road in front of the houses. Is, cars don't drive fast, people walk on it, kids play basketball on it and ride their tricycles. It doesn't need sidewalks, it's designed for people to interact. And we learn from that, if contractors can do that, and if people want. Properties that they can traverse without having to duck somebody speeding from. East High to what? Malta, no, from East High to, um. Uh, it's not important, to the northern end of town, uh, you don't have to worry about them running over you. I think there are a lot of lessons to be learned by where, where things are going well, I'm glad to see you're working on sidewalks. One doesn't need sidewalks everywhere in the village, but some place, some places very much need. Uh, sidewalks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Slada, thank you, Foreman, both of you. Uh, let's see, uh, Gina, uh. You are good to go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Gina Marosi, Ten O Glory Lane, um. I have a real problem with this benefit assessment, AKA tax. Um, there's a bunch of us in the village who own properties or live there. That have put their sidewalks in. Many of us have never taken a dime from the village. In doing so. I could rattle off several right off the top of my head. So we've put in our sidewalks, we didn't put, we didn't charge the village a cent for it. Some of us extended our sidewalks to benefit other businesses, such as my family extending it down through the museum property. And now we're gonna have to pay even more, I mean. Uh, this, this needs, this needs to stop. Okay, or. Some, you're gonna have a rebellion on your hands, because I know there are several people that feel this way, they did the right thing. They, and then didn't charge back to the village, and now you're gonna tax us, it's not gonna fly, thank you.
Thank you, I think that is it, uh, those are legacy hands that are up right now there, so, uh, unless there's something else, just wanna bring up one issue for Monday's meeting, if I may. Alex brief, only cuz I'm running out of time, I do have to, uh, address one thing regarding about Monday, so go ahead as quick as you can, if I can get you to a lot of the talk, there you go. If I can get you to a lot of talk, there you go. You're good to go. Alex, go ahead.
Okay, I'll be really quick. And I I've I've heard this argument for a number of stuff in the village over and over again and uh but the argument that that Gina just made where you know, we did the right thing, we've already put money into stuff. It's just with that mentality, we're never gonna get anywhere as a village because if you look at all the stuff that we didn't have and you want to just keep having the village run the way it did because that's what you had to live through. It it's not really fair to the, you know, younger members, new members to the community and everything like that. So I think we should look forward what's best village, not what makes the most sense for people who already did the right thing. Um hopefully, we can, we can make it better for everyone such that eventually everyone comes around and be able to appreciate things, so that that's it.
Thank you. Okay, uh you, did you want to say something to me over there or are we just?
No, I'm.
Uh Monday, uh for Monday, I'm going to be getting out and talk to Don Rose uh late today or today, today, but I just have a chance, have a chance to sit down. I mean, uh he says there's no reason not to approve uh John Street recommendation, uh so I can get you guys his documentation letter. Uh and I'll give you some narrative about the things he's recommending, we do with add-ons versus picking into the contract and everything else. So I'll get that to you hopefully tomorrow. All that stuff uh by email, just so you look out for and if you have any questions available throughout the weekend to discuss and into Monday. But uh I just want to make sure that DOH has not given us a file rendering, but they were just waiting for some documents or a matter of course. DOH.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah, DOH has oversight on these types of things. So it'll be contingent, obviously, on their approval, but he's not concerned that they wouldn't give approval at this point. It's just they just wanted to see a couple of last things come in uh as normal. So I'll get that to you. I just wanted to make sure he was good with us going forward with the bid approval at this point and we'll start moving that.
Great, thank you.
Anything else, uh anybody else needs before we adjourn? Can I get a motion adjourn? Trustee Funde and stuff, trusty ring discussion, all favor. Pose, motion carry, see you Monday night.
Have a good Monday. Have a good weekend.